I'm calling to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for being here. We've got a pretty full agenda and so I appreciate you hanging in all the minute lately getting here. Let's just get started by doing the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We have an agenda before you, earlier last week. If you have any questions about it, otherwise we're looking for a motion to approve.
Please approve the agenda as presented.
Thanks, I'll second that. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 It's helping everybody's voting even with our mouths covering. That was unanimous. All right, first item on the agenda is public hearings. We have several, four I believe. First is the Killable Hills Land Use.
Mayor, you want me to take?
Oh yes, I guess we just got some stuff to get through.
So there will be four public hearings tonight conducted by the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules and procedure are going to apply to these hearings. A public notice of each hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin board in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of this notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted and forwarded to the town clerk. If speaking tonight, please limit your comments to matters that are relevant to this issue, depending on which hearing we're holding, and to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement will be taped. There will be no debates. And also, please identify yourself and your address when you come forward for the board. So the first public hearing will please come to order. Now, this hearing is called for the purpose, Killable Hills Board of Commissioners, to consider the following. The Killable Hills Land Use Plan Update. The following individuals have indicated desire to speak. There are none on the sign-up sheet, I do not believe. Nope, so I'll call from out. If anybody out there wants to speak about the Land Use Plan Public Hearing. All right. Whatever you guys think.
All right. We have covered this territory a number of times. We've had excellent work by staff spanning many years, hard work by the Planning Board, and a number of other professionals that helped us out with what is a very complex and long process. If you know the backstory about it, I think most folks here have been following this for a while. Our last land use plan was 1999. And so we are very excited to finally bring it to fruition after many years of hard work to update our plan for the future. So that everything that we do can be aligned with this bigger vision of a better Killable Hills going forward. Does anybody have any comments before we move forward on making this official? All right, well, hearing none, we know that the staff recommends the approval and we are looking to approve the resolution that you have in your packet of the Board of Commissioners and the town of Killable Hills adopting the town's Camel Land Use Update. I believe there's a consistency statement, is that part of this?
Just the resolution for this. Just the resolution.
Oh, just the resolution, okay. All right. So that's the motion, is there a second? I'll second that. We have a second from Mr. Winley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, that's a momentous moment.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you to everybody involved. Thank you many times and continue to thank you because I'm sure that will help us do a better job moving forward, a great job moving forward. So I guess back to you, Casey, we have to go through those motions again or will you lead us into the next?
I will, Mayor, thank you. The second public hearing will now please come to order. And this hearing is called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider Swell Brewery located 1802 South Virginia Dairy Trail, Commercial Zone. It's a proposed brewery with tasting room, outdoor dining activity area, 30 parking spaces, and associated site improvement agreements. Again, I don't have anybody on the sheet who has signed up, is there anyone to speak? So I'll call from the audience, and I believe the applicants are here. So they're here if you have questions as well, but is there anyone else who would like to speak about Swell Brewery publicly?
All right, well, I guess that's back to us. For anybody watching or listening in here in the room or out there on the interwebs, normally, commercial process is fairly straightforward, it goes through staff. The only reason we're looking at this all is that it's conditional use based on the outdoor activity area. Other than that, we have a drawing in front of us and we know that a lot of planning went into making a beautiful site plan here. It has been voted unanimously by the Planning Board with the recommendation to approve. So the motion will be in order. Does anybody have any questions? We have a motion from Ivy, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Terry. Any further discussion? Not hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations on the next step, fellows, looking forward to seeing you break ground.
Tasting room.
Exciting to have that in the town. The next item is number three.
The third public hearing will now please come to order. And this hearing is called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider an amendment to Chapter 153 of the Killable Hills Town Code. Zoning 153.077 is the zoning section. This relates to modifications to allow LED string accent lights in the commercial zone. Again, nobody has signed up, so they went from the audience to speak regarding the modifications to the LED lights in a commercial zone.
You know, in public governance, we like it when things are not controversial. So again, this has been through a number of months of discussions with the Planning Board, with staff, looking at the best way to achieve the balance between having a little creativity and bringing a little sparkle to, but also be very aware that we're, you know, we don't worry about sticking with our land use plan, the old one and the new one, regarding light pollution and that sort of thing. So we think we've taken all those things into account. As you all know, we've covered this pretty thoroughly. So this is the one I was thinking of. If we choose to have a motion here, we're also looking at putting that consistency statement there. If anybody has any thoughts or questions, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion of approval to ordinance 153.077 signs. Modifications to allow LED string access lights in the commercial zone is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Killable Hills that are applicable. This amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides commercial business owners the ability to have accent lighting to highly their establishments.
Could've said it better myself. We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second. At the other end, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's the smooth sound of the government moving forward. Thank you all. Moving on, Casey, number four.
The fourth public hearing will now come to order. And this hearing is called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider an amended conditional use site plan located 808A, 8th Avenue, in the Light Industrial II Zone. And the purpose is to modify the site plan to remove workforce housing designation from Unit 808A. Nobody has signed up, so, anybody in the crowd?
Yeah, I was on the Planning Board when we put these opportunities into place and there was a release valve, so you could buy your way out of the designation if you so chose in the future. And we are placing that right now. So again, with no comments from the public, I guess we don't have too much resistance to this idea. As unfortunate as it might be, we always like to have the affordable housing in the town. We try to encourage that sort of thing and we'll keep on working in that direction. That said, we're looking for a motion. Everybody jumping in?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Feel free.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Conditional Use Plan Site Plan 808A, A Street, 8th Avenue, in the Light Industrial II Zone. Modify Site Plan to Remove Workforce Housing Designation from Unit 808A.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion on the floor, we are looking for a second. Ms. Ingram? Any further questions or comments to discuss? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
More public hearings without any pitchforks.
In record time.
Record time, we don't know how to get this done. Moving on, this is the point in the meeting where we have our general public comment. Once again, we have a very full page of no names on this piece of paper. That said, same rules apply, three minutes and five minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in public comment? For your speaking pleasure, we will do this one more time at the end of the meeting. Thank you for your time, I will now close public comment. No need to respond to public comments, so is there anything in old business or we move right into new business?
New business.
All right, new business it is. The exciting topic with which you heard the murmuring before the meeting.
Meekens Field.
Excited to see you on the next step. Working towards applying for some money from debt possibilities, all that stuff, pull us in on the waste.
All right, I'll get you guys started with this memo that you have in your packet. As you recall, back in February of 2020, Board of Commissioners reviewed and approved a recommendation from the West Side Recreation Group for improvements to Meekens Field. This project moved to the top of the list because of the unique circumstances at the site. Meekens Field is currently closed due to construction of the new Killable Hills Water Tower and Communications Monopole. These two projects are in the final stages of completion. The old water tower came down in the first week of September. These projects have disturbed much of Meekens Field, which will require extensive work to reopen the park. This has created an opportunity to fully redevelop the facility. Since significant funds will be required to bring it back to a usable park. Since that time, staff has been working with a conceptual plan that was presented to the board and town engineer to create a master plan. Attached is a master plan layout that includes... Let me get that pulled up.
I'll go on, he's pulling it up. 64 parking areas with the circular drop-off area, an art wall. He won't point out stuff as I go through. An art wall in the parking area for local artists and groups to paint. A double picnic shelter with restrooms, planning for three restroom facilities, men's, women's, and families. A large playground area, equipment to be determined. A splash pad, which would be the first in Deer County. If anybody's not familiar with this splash pad, it's the, yeah, that shoots water up from the... Picnic shelter, we'll have a third picnic shelter by the tennis courts. A soccer multi-use field. A smaller practice field. Sidewalk and exercise track around the entire facility. Two new parking areas on the south side of the property, one back behind the EMS station and one between the fire station and Meekens Field. A fence in and around the facility. New irrigations, water fountain and benches throughout the facility. Widening of the current EMS road on the south side to create two-way traffic pattern, which creates a major safety, solves a major safety problem. And a lot of site preparation, including leveling the fields and filling and obviously trying to salvage the turf that we have and replacing what we need to. This is kind of where I come in. The preliminary cost estimates to achieve this is $878,000. We can round to $880,000 for good measure, for easy talking. There were some monies allocated for the project, in the water tower project, knowing that there was going to be damage to the site, but not enough to do all of this. So what we're requesting is that the Board of Commissioners authorize staff to apply for an Outer Banks Visitors Bureau Tourism Impact Grant. It is due on September the 30th. Gives us a good two weeks to get it together for them. It'll be a, we have to provide at least 50% of the cost of the project for an impact grant of this size. And we're requesting authorization to apply for that grant.
You're speaking out of turn, but I think it would be crazy not to do that. But that's a fantastic idea.
It's a good way to take a recreation area and bring it to a state-of-the-art facility that will attract people. Staff has done a great job in working with the development of this. And I'm pretty excited about it, I think it's pretty nice.
Looks great, and thank you for your time and energy on the West Side Recreation Group that I know threw a lot of ideas at the wall to get to this conceptual idea.
And our town engineer, if you look at some of the other concepts that he did, has all of the underground utilities and drainage and stuff from the tower and the monopole. And him having to work around all of that underground stuff to make this happen is pretty incredible. There's enough lines on the other one that it looks like a spaghetti model.
And staff has been very conservative in how they've approached this. Like, for example, I was talking with Cameron, he indicated they weren't going to tear up the concrete that was there, they were going to overlay it with asphalt, which the fire department uses that as a training pad, so to speak, and that'll actually give it more strength and help them out with the large apparatus they use. So, you know, that saved a lot of money. So I've been impressed with that as well.
Pick up and drop off is a really great concept. Park right up close if you're coach or whoever.
I love the splash pad.
Splash pad is really going to get a lot of attention.
And some of the other cost-saving things that we did was notice that the playground is all in one area with a sidewalk on one side of it. That allows us not to have to irrigate the other side of the sidewalk because it'll be a play area with mulch instead of having a play area here and a play area here and you have to redo your whole, you know, so it really saves a lot of effort on the buildings and grounds guys and a lot of money not having to...
To make a simpler sprinkler setup.
To make a simpler sprinkler setup to take care of the fields.
And you can get into some stuff that is just really, really expensive. I know some of the things that got bounced around were, one of them was like a ninja course. And I think some of those things are like $400,000.
Yes, that was good.
Take a little more maintenance to it.
I think we need to be careful about that, just throwing stuff in there, you know.
I'm late to the game, I guess, but this is the first time I've seen it laid out with prices. I guess it's the first time anybody has seen it laid out with prices. But, and this really spells out what's included and what, you know, was decided. But, you know, to me, I still, I had heard and I wanted and hoped for that large field to be turf. I think that would be a real centerpiece. I mean, the splash pad is nice, I know it's first of its kind, but so would the turf field be first of its kind? I think it would be as big as soccer is here. What it could be a centerpiece for the town. Now, I mean, there are other allocated things, let's say, you know, let's say that the turf would cost $100,000 and there would be no...
For the full-size field, much bigger.
Oh, how much?
150, 170 minutes.
Okay. So let's just say...
It has a shelf life.
Right, but let's just say that over $75,000, $77,000 picnic shelters. I mean, what, I mean, are there some things that could make this park more, stand out more than some things that are duplicative of other parks in the area? What we've seen, you know, with other parks.
We're trying, we were, with the master plan in the West Side Recreation Group, sorry. We're trying to make the park as diverse for all groups in our town, including families with children, then, you know, athletes, adult soccer leagues, young soccer leagues, lacrosse players.
And you know turf would be that much bigger, even you talked about it. I know because I've talked to you guys about it before. And it was supposed to be, or was considered.
If I had a recommendation based on what we've got here and applying for a grant for a master plan, what I would recommend at this point is for us to apply for the grant and see if we get it. And then when we bring that to you guys, possibly put turf as an alternate bid to sod and see what those differences are in the next step through construction. Assuming that we get a grant. And if it's cost-effective to, you know, if Cameron's wrong and this is such a big project, 77,000 for sod versus 100,000 for turf, then the board may choose to move towards the turf. But if it's 77,000 versus 210,000 for sod versus turf, you may want to make a different decision. But we're not going to really know that until we get into the next phase of this. So if the master plan is amenable to you guys, then what we would do is apply for a grant for what we think that we would need, basically, to reach this $880,000 and then start alternating, doing bid alternations for some upgrades to the field.
And you want to ask for much, I mean, as much as you want or need, but I guess not too much.
They're not going to give us, they're not going to give us 50% of this.
I'm not asking that on the record, but what I want to know is, so is there an idea like covered picnic areas could be, could go, maybe no covered picnic areas in exchange for turf fields? Could it change that much, you know what I'm saying?
No.
So this has to, so what you laid out has to be followed, itemized.
You have to have the elements that are laid out on the master plan. So if you don't want a picnic area, then it needs to be removed from the master plan.
And we'd have to, we're deciding that now.
If you want to apply for the grant, yes, sir.
Because my thing is, you know, I feel like there's some things that are very standard with the park and that this could make, like, that could make the difference in making this park real special.
Killable Hills doesn't have any picnic areas. We're the only town that doesn't have a park with picnic areas.
And something to note, looking back at when this whole conversation started, the main field was never brought up by the West Side group to ever have AstroTurf. It was only the practice field. And now because building and grounds recommended that it might be a nice thing because when we oversee the main field, there would be still somewhere to play that'll hold you around. But looking at the cost of AstroTurf, it may be possible for a practice field and replacing it down the road, but for the full-size field, for pickup games, it was not ever considered.
Seems like something all of Deer County would really, would like as well. Not to, I mean, that's obviously with Killable Hills, but it seems like it's going to be an attraction for the entire county to have something that unique here. That's how I feel about it, yeah. There's nothing like it and there's a lot of sports that can be played on, it's not just soccer, so.
That's actually a board's decision. This is the recommendation from the staff based on their interaction with the West Side group. So that would be for the board to direct us. But as Meredith stated, she does have to have the elements in place to apply for the grant and you do not meet again before she needs to take that.
Understand.
Originally, when I heard you talking, I was thinking that, you know, ask for more, but my memory of that grant group is that, yeah, that's way over, that's 50% would be shooting really high. They're not, you know, they have so much to divvy up among the whole county and we're going to get whatever we get regardless of what we're asking for.
So we have to more or less pass on this line, not line by line, obviously, but we're saying we're in agreement with the way this is set out as far as what we're going to spend money on.
I think what she's, what she's saying, what you did say, Meredith, was that if, you know, you mentioned something about the covered picnic area not having that. I think for this master plan, that is an important element. When you think about, you know, the sun and being in sheltered. So taking, changing that from just a few picnic tables to a covered area, I think would affect how they may look at it. I think the other part that they were recommending is apply for the grant, having the elements that are outlined in her memo. And then hopefully we will get a large portion of what we've asked for. And then you look at the turf for an ultimate bid.
If you can add more to this plan.
And right, the turf does not, does not change it as an element, an element change.
If you change it from sod to turf, that's not changing the master plan elements and the turf and board's not going to care.
Yeah, and I'm just saying.
The other thing that you can look at is, instead of, if the alternate bid is too high, is you can also let it go a year, see what its use is, see if it has enough use to warrant an expenditure such as turf, and then put it in your Recreation Facilities Capital Improvement Plan for
Secondary product.
Secondary, you know, Phase 2. If this is a super-popular facility and we really need to look past sod, it's not holding up. We need to look to something stronger and better. There's nothing to say that you can't change that in the future, but if you don't have, you know, if it's holding up well and you might, you know, you might want to hold off for three or four years and slowly build up those funds to do that large of a project. Because I'm going to contend that it's going to be about half, a quarter of a million dollars to do a turf large field like that.
Also, just out of curiosity, you mentioned a lot of things underground. Is there anything under, because the weight of AstroTurf is also impossible in some areas depending on what's underground.
And that would be something we need to consider.
So that might be something for the engineer, especially water lines.
Yeah, possibly, and there's a big... I can show you that.
So AstroTurf is a lot more, is a lot heavier, right, than both sods?
Well, I can say upkeep and it would...
It might be a moot point if there, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it would also save savings. So we have a large drainage security.
I was about to say, if you look on here, you can imagine where the drain field is.
I know, that's what I'm wondering.
And we would, it might eliminate that.
It might not be possible, yeah, that's my thought.
But there are some savings too, right? Upkeep and whatnot, I mean.
For turf?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean turf, turf for the last 10 years.
I'm just saying if there's drainage, I mean, if there's already pipes there, it, the weight of the AstroTurf will crack, like, it's not possible.
No, it looks like that that area besides the water irrigation is pretty clear, I know.
There's no irrigation, oh, right, I understand that.
The drain field is, right.
The drain field is what I'm wondering about.
Yeah, the drain field is in this area. And you would have to stay at least five feet from it. I mean, it'd be, this, the field would likely get smaller.
Yeah.
You can have grass and open field playing field on top of that, but real turf.
You can't put the turf on it because it's not draining properly.
I mean, I don't know that for sure, but I would definitely, that would be a concern of mine.
Sure, well, it wasn't, it wasn't really brought up a whole lot, so we didn't investigate it much.
Right, right, it would be a question for a week, I guess, for sure.
The one that the West Side group talked about was for the practice field, the small practice field.
Right, which is far away from that area.
Right, yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing back there, so.
Just to wrap it up, it seems like the picnic table particularly is an important element in the, in the, having the best outcome from the grant committee. But these are the kinds of things that they know have been researched by our West Side Recreation Group. They are, they're things that the public is interested in seeing. They're part of our land use plan, you know, they line up the land use plan. But I think that I'm also hearing that in, we have plenty of time before a shovel's going to hit the ground on this. We have to wait for the grant cycle to, you know, go... before a shovel is going to hit the ground on this. We have to wait for the grant cycle to, to, you know, go its course. That we can gather more information, possibly from the engineering side and certainly from the pricing side, the pluses and minuses of the costs, the longevity, so we can be more educated on, you know, what is the ongoing cost of, of grass turf versus artificial turf. And, and then also sort of get a feel for what the soccer community and the lacrosse community has to say about it. I know that on the school board for many years, soccer community has come together, raised a great deal of money to build bleachers at the high school and create all sorts of things as, as gifts to, to the county. And it came to facilities for soccer. It happened in Manayor too, where they built a dugout for the baseball field years ago. That was all provided by citizens and not part of the general budget. So going forward, if, if we can have enough information to share with the public, we could say, here, here's our gap. Here's what we're looking for. We might be able to get some support from the public. Or maybe the public says, no, grass field is fine. Or maybe it's too much money or something. But we have all those options still on the table for a big bill coming to come. And we also have Meredith's option too, down the road in a few years is also a possibility. And if you're going to do it eventually, you probably have to do it right away, but, um, because, you know, turf, regular grass turf and irrigation costs real money. You wouldn't want to abandon that early either. So, but I'm, I'm with you. I think that's worth feeling out.
I just feel like it could be something real special and unique, or it can just be like any park that is here on Dare County. So, you know, we have a chance, maybe opportunity to do that. And that's why I'm.
Yeah, when we look at, when we look at the grant cycles, the tourism board particularly looks at, at facilities that are community, overall rounded community facilities versus
Two specialists.
specialized facilities.
Yeah, but this would be, I have confidence this would be used a lot, from what I, from what I know. Maybe not. In my opinion, I think it would be used a lot.
I've heard folks talking about privately building stuff like this. It's never really happened, but you never know.
Yes, yes. Yes.
One quick question. Is there an estimate after the grant cycle of potential, when this project will start? When it could potentially be finished? Just an estimate of it.
Uh, the, the estimate is I think that once we get the, the numbers together and what we're going to apply for our grant for and get that in, Ross may start to do some preliminary work because we're not going to get fifty percent of this project. So we can do a certain amount of work upfront and get prep. We should get notification from the tourism board by December. Is when we typically get our contract and we'll be able to work immediately upon signing the contract. And hopefully we can get some of this prep work done that I don't think is going to be covered under the grant done so that we're ready to, ready to roll.
Did I understand that some, some of this is sort of under the street's idea of the street's budget?
So some of it, some of it, there are some money set aside from the water tower project.
We're about the streets part of it. Is that being written or not?
Well, there's, there's some money set aside from the water tower project to fix Meekins Field and the parking lot because they knew that the water tower project, they did staging on the field, they tore up the parking lot, you know, they cracked it, big equipment and, you know.
So a certain portion of the eight-hundred thou- thousand.
So there's some money that we already have.
Okay.
And, and that's what we got to get straight for the, for the application is what we have and what we need. And then we'll make application and hopefully find out. Usually you get a whisper somewhere at the end of October, beginning in November and a contract in December. And that, our, our goal would be that we have done some prep work prior to that and be ready to roll.
All right. Hypothetically, by next spring, summer, really, they have a lot of this done. If everything goes.
I don't, I don't think it'll be completely open, but I think that it'll be, it'll be in some stage of, of being able to be used.
Yeah, some substantial completion for, certainly the road parts of.
It's, it's a very, very big project, so I'm not sure it's, it's, it's not a winner project. It's, it'll take a little bit, but we'll, there'll be, there'll be some use of it by, I would hope, I would hope by, uh, summer next year.
It's missed. It's being missed, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there, there's a shortage of places to play, for sure. And the whole county, I think that we, we could build three more fields and still fill them up every day after school until nine o'clock at night, every night.
Those, those were the cool things about this idea was that you didn't have two open field type places you could play. Whether it's lacrosse or soccer or football or whatever you want to choose. I think, I think it'll cater to a lot of people.
That was always, that was always the way, but I think it could be a higher use. You could get a higher use of it. There's a way.
The, the one issue with, with the higher use is it's not.
So, but we still have that option.
Right.
Once, once they come back with this, so, so we can decide then what would you.
It's not like we're fixing that. We're just potentially looking at it more.
Yeah, yeah, it's not on the table, I think, yeah. Get a little more information.
That's fine, yeah.
Is that good with you?
Yeah, thank you. Just trying to make it exciting.
Uh, yeah, I'm with you. It's a very challenging budget cycle too, because we really don't know what, what, uh, we took a bunch of things out of the budget when we came into COVID land and
Yeah.
a lot of those were capital projects and we still have those priorities and we're hoping to put some of them back in. But we also have some new revenue that we hope is, is making up for all the lost revenue in the spring. So, uh, there's a lot of big open questions there about what might be possible. Each meeting that we meet in the next few months will tell us more, uh, how that plays out. I think we're going to get a little more information later on this meeting as a matter of fact. So.
I think we got something else coming up.
That's right. That's on the agenda as well. So for the moment, all we are looking for in terms of that, that motion here is approval for the staff to seek the, uh, the grant money. So.
Mayor, I make a motion that authorize the staff to apply for out of banks of visitor here, tourism impact grant, according to the requirements of new business item when you can see.
Fantastic. We have a motion from Mr. Gray. I'll second. We have people fighting over the second. And just a point of discussion.
Yes. Now, then you're for it.
I'm not on the steering committee, I just have to say.
That's right, right. There you go. But, uh, yeah, so you're, she's familiar because she's at those meetings all the time and you see all the things that they do get approved. So there's pot of money we should be asking for every year, right?
Right.
Something out of that pot of money. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? I think that was, that was unanimous as well. Thank you guys. Good discussion on that. It's going to be great no matter how it turns out. Thanks for all the hard work, staff. We really appreciate it. It's always great to have you even play your pictures than the last time. Just keep it cool. All right, let's see. Moving back, we, item two on new business, we have a number of appointments. There've been a number of discussions leading up into this meeting about them. There are two positions on the planning board that are, that are coming up. We had, had, um, one of the members left for another area. Uh, and one is just coming up for Tom brief. And then we have three positions on the community appearance commission, some of which have expressed interest in, in being reappointed. Wanted to kind of open this up and, and also just start off with a caveat that this isn't urgent. We can live with an open position for a moment or two. If we wanted to cast a wider net, if we feel strongly about someone for one of these spots right now, we can certainly take action on it tonight. Open floor.
Planning board certainly has a lot of really amazing people that are interested, for sure, doesn't seem one of them. So it's, you know, there are a number of names in there that I recognize and with a history of doing some really good work, so.
And I've talked to some of you, one of them, not everybody. And so I, I feel a little bit like I haven't done enough to talk to everybody that's involved. Uh, so I'm coming to this, uh, open minded to where you guys are, are headed. And at the same time, perfectly willing to, to set a few more meetings, make a few more calls and make sure we get just the right people on the right seat on the bus.
Yeah, I, my feeling is like, we have a pretty amazing list here of qualified and interested people. But at the same time, it wouldn't hurt a thing to maybe slow down a little bit, take another month, advertise the opening and see how many more applications make up. And then if you do, it makes potentially could help our applicant pool for future spots as well. But to see if there's anybody else interested in, that's just my thought. I mean, I'm, I'm just several of these folks and I'm, I'm confident in all the ability to serve.
Right, right.
But sometimes it's nice to probably get the word out that maybe you have an opening. Is there anybody else out there who'd like to apply?
Yes, and that is to also say that we are very pleased with the group we're at. And if that's the, the one we've got, fantastic candidates.
Yeah, I would lean more towards just delving into who we have and just, you know, talking through views. Um, and I, I talked to Dylan earlier and he's very, and again, I think he'd be great. And, but, you know, I know there could be a couple other people who would be great as well, so giving a little bit more time to talk.
It's really about doing all the homework. I feel the same way about Dylan. He certainly has shown through his actions of dedication to doing his homework and being prepared and having a genuine interest for the town. He's, you know, interested in all the right reasons, as I'm sure these other candidates are, so just, I fluff it out because we're here.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it.
No, we really do appreciate all you've done on West Side Recreation Group too.
Thank you.
Uh, over on this side, any, anybody want to bring a few more bits of information before we kind of figure our way forward here?
Oh, you know, I kind of, I, I kind of see what John's saying. I kind of want to head in that direction. I think maybe see if we can stimulate some more applicants. I, I'm comfortable with what we have as far as the applications as well. I mean, especially working with Dylan on the West Side group, I've worked for him in the hard case. But I, it'd be interesting to see if we can stimulate some, some more applications because I think it's kind of stagnant.
Some of those names we've seen many, many times. And I think I've heard some folks that might be interested in having you put in paperwork.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing as well.
Yeah, there's a gentleman, Martin Dalton, who is interested in the community appearance commission. And, um, I believe he has an application in, but I don't think he had checked that box. But he was on the planning board box. He's been using that. Um, and I know John's talked to him as well and seems very interested in.
Yeah, I also like to reach out to him. I'm not, so.
Okay. Well, it's not me that's feeling a little less than ideally prepared.
No.
And, um, I, you know, I would like to always not ever have an empty seat, but at the same time, we'll definitely get the right person to jump. So why don't we give ourselves, uh, the month and dedicate ourselves to talking to as many of them as we can, each of us. And then we'll feel like we really made a solid decision. Is that's all right with, we're, we're not breaking any statutes there?
No, sir, but I, I do have a question. Um, you do, you have two seats on the planning board.
Right.
Um, Miss Simpson's seat expires in September, so if you're not going to reappoint her, then you're going to have two vacant seats on the planning board.
Right.
I just wanted to point that out, if we're all understanding.
That board has five members, is that, no, I'm just trying to speak. It's not a core mission, but it's really just a creating a vacancy rather than not reappointing.
Yes, but her seat would expire, um, the end of this month, so she would not be able to serve in October unless, is our meeting before your planning board meeting? Okay, so you, so she could be, okay.
So, so, yeah, I see what you're saying. You're saying, yes, she's interested, she's qualified. We are not unhappy with her. Maybe we should go ahead and reappoint her. The reappointment.
We do split it.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. You can, you can do that. And then, um, we will readvertise both in, you know, various, um, social media and in the papers and bring that back to you in October.
Super. So we're looking for a motion for the one red.
The one seat, yes, sir.
I'll make that motion that we reappoint Mary Simpson, uh, to her next, I guess, the term ending in September twenty-twenty. Is that good verbiage?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three. That'd be a short one if that was the case. And, uh, she's already in there for a little more month. And I guess we'll just start with that one seat. Just reappoint Mary. Okay, so we have, uh, we have a motion on the floor for.
Second, second motion.
And a second. From Cherry, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right.
And the same for the CAC. Also advertised for the CAC.
Right. And were there? Well, there's three seats available and two of those people expressed interest in being reappointed. Bambos and Dave, you know, they've done a fine job on our board. I'd like to see them sort of in on the term.
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
Dave really stood out.
But then you have a vacant seat as well.
Then we'll have one more to deal with.
More vacancy. Cause right now we have two names. You know, Martin Dalton is also interested. It may be a case of some of the people on the planning board are just checking a few more boxes on their submitted applications. So, all right, so was that an informal motion there?
Motion to reappoint her.
Yeah. So I'll make the informal formal, um, oh boy, Bambos, uh, to, uh, I'll make a motion to reappoint Bambos, Cheryl Lambos and Dave Rollins to, uh, their terms on the, uh, planning board that would end in, believe, October twenty-twenty-three.
Excellent. A motion on the floor.
A second.
A second from this team group. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Thank you, thank you all. The next item is the aforementioned budget update. We'll find out.
Yes, sir. And Beverly will be presenting this, this evening. We're, we're thinking that giving you this information before you retreat Saturday would kind of save some time and sort of get your minds around what you can, how much and what you want to discuss about the budget. She's going to, um, really just highlight the revenues that were effective by October nineteen and the traveling and spending, um, and the various social distancing regulations. Just to think that.
Good evening, this is hopefully going to be quick and painless. I just wanted to give you an update on, as you can see, trends, um, the, from budget to actual over the past six years. Budget's presented in the blue bar. Actuals are, um, presented in the orange. When we get to nineteen and twenty, twenty-twenty ended with the three, excuse me, there are four months of COVID revenues. But we actually ended sales tax in twenty-twenty, just point eight percent above the prior year total. So we, all in all, we didn't end badly. Um, from July to February, we were ahead six-point-three-five percent over the prior year. Then, which was about a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand is equated in dollars. From March to June, there was a fourteen percent drop in revenues compared to last year from March to June, twenty-twenty, which was equated to a hundred, one-hundred-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars for a net increase of twenty-two thousand, hence the point eight percent. So what we've got for twenty-twenty-one budget is two-point-seven million, which is pretty much in line with the prior year, a couple of years, as you can see. I put the actual, we just got sales tax or notification of the amount of sales tax that was applicable for June sales today. So we're always a couple of months behind. And all, and these revenues I'm showing you are economic indicators locally, statewide, et cetera. And to get the full effect for the first quarter of our fiscal year, we won't know anything until October, November, to get the first quarter. So, um, anyway, so year-to-date, July, um, for this fiscal year, based on prior, um, averages, we budgeted three-fourteen for just July and we actually received four-hundred-and-five. So you kind of can see that in the bar graph. We are, we are ahead this year versus last year. And we're ahead from the budget. We're up from last year fifteen percent, fifteen-point-six percent over what we collected in July, for the month of July, excuse me, prior year. So for July, it's good. I mean, we don't know what the future holds, but so far, um, we're holding, you know, pretty steady. So we'll go to occupancy tax, another economic indicator, and we've all seen that lately. So occupancy. So occupancy has been, again, blue budget. Unless, unless you have questions, I'm just going to scroll through. So just stop me. Okay, blue is our budget. Yeah, blue is our budget, orange is our actuals. You can see over the past six years how we pretty much usually exceed our budget just a little. I think one year we didn't. But twenty nineteen compared to twenty, so from nineteen to twenty, we're down in total five point five percent.
Not bad, considering what happened for twenty twenty-one.
Considering what we've been through, that's correct. So from July to February of twenty twenty, we were ahead two point three percent, two point three seven percent, which is, I mean, we're knocking that, we try to budget so, you know, closely, which was about forty-five thousand dollars ahead. From March to June, we're down twenty percent, and that was a negative one hundred and ninety-five thousand. And so that ultimately nets out to be, what, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars below last, below last year of the time for the, for the year. So we're all just a little bit under budget. Fortunately, it was in the months that were low for us anyway, as far as occupancies, usually June is, you know, considerable, but still good. Budgeted for twenty twenty-one, budgeted, remember we budgeted based on how the tourism board did? So we basically took, um, yeah, we took revenues, let me see, I've got that somewhere here. I want to say seventy percent of June.
They really projected that it was going to be a lot softer than it was, so.
I think I got it subtler. Yes. So we projected seventy percent collections from twenty eighteen in July, eighty percent collections for Au- for August for twenty eighteen. So we had a method. It was based on prior years, et cetera. However, the occupancy for July, for the month, the occupancies that occurred in July that we just collected in September, again, the budget for occupancies in July was, um, let's see, three thirty-two was the bud- no, excuse me, I'm sorry. Budget. Budgets just for July, occupancies was five seventy-nine, four sixty-three. And I have a method to that, so I go do an average of the past July occupancies. And so that was the average, and that's how we budgeted. And then the actuals for July was eight eighty-one. So we're up forty-one percent over the prior year. Again, it's just the one month, so we won't know the full effect really until October, November of the first quarter. Yeah, so.
Who would have guessed that back in April?
And that, who knows? Yeah. I mean, and we don't know what's going to happen for, you know, in the next few months, but.
We have a lot more ahead than September.
At least we, but we know for July.
Yeah, we know, but that's a really good sign for July.
It's a good sign for July.
Very encouraging what September might be. Anecdotally, everybody's saying that that they're booked up more. I know my company is down pat, or something, a hundred percent. It's completely sold one hundred percent out in September.
And again, these figures, yeah, these figures, this, this bar chart and the data that's behind this bar chart is for Kalamazoo, Illinois. It doesn't consider all of Darestown.
Right, right.
It's our, it's our share that comes back to us.
This is very helpful.
Good, good. Okay, next one is land transfer. Don't have, I don't have a lot of data for that. I just wanted you to see that we met our budget for twenty twenty. Things were selling still. We have exceeded budget over the past several years, fairly closely, but we did budget a little less, more in line, we just, we, we budgeted a little less. There's no, for me, there's no real indicators as far as sales unless we get them from, well, we just, I don't have an indicator. I just kind of go from prior year's averages. I just wanted to show you that's how the sales for twenty twenty. Now, we have collected all of twenty twenty, nothing for twenty twenty-one. We have not received anything yet. That's a quarterly distribution, so that won't, yeah, October, November. Okay, next economic indicator is our building permits. We're still, this has exceeded the budget in twenty twenty. Oh, look at, look at the prior years versus budget. Off the chart. Building.
Underestimating what was going to happen in there.
Yeah, I can tell you, twenty twenty, we decided to go ahead and budget for those building permits that we've been doing all along.
All right, yeah.
Let's see, I got the data for that. Building permits, we budgeted three twenty-five for the actual for twenty twenty was three thirty-nine. This year, again, we budgeted three hundred and twenty-five thousand already through Friday. I just did it through Friday, sixty-three thousand, five hundred.
Not bad for barely one tenth of the year.
So I don't think, yeah. Okay, so, next one. Now, this chart kind of gives you an idea, over time, the last six years, total rev- total general fund revenues are in green, the total general fund expenditures are in yellow. And where you see the, the, when general fund revenues exceed the expenditures, that helps to grow our fund balance. Okay, so this past year in twenty twenty, we didn't, we're not going to necessarily grow our fund balance. That number, that, I put estimate there because we're not completely done closing our books. Our auditor will be on site next week. So we're not completely done, but it's a good estimate. That expenditures also includes the encumbrances, which you'll see later tonight. So with, with that in mind, one of, one of the positives in that is we had estimated in our budget, or we had actually included in our budget for a fund balance appropriation in excess of two million dollars, but our actual fund balance appropriation will probably be in the one million dollar range, nine hundred and fifty thousand. So it won't take the fund balance down as much as we had projected when we did the budget last year.
For a rainy day, and it was officially a rainy day.
It was a rainy day. And we got another rainy day in twenty twenty-one. So in twenty twenty-one, see, our, our, our budget, our revenue, our expenditure exceeds our revenue. Again, that's a, almost two million, it's one point nine six eight is our fund balance appropriation. That's what we budgeted. That might completely be different picture before the end of the year. Things can happen, good and bad. So with that information, unless there's questions, I'll move on to the last slide, which estimates, again, we've got actual fund balance percentages through twenty nineteen. That fund balance at sixty-six point eight percent is roughly twelve million, twelve and a half million. So with the twenty twenty estimate bringing that fund balance down, like we just saw, it's going to bring it to approximately sixty percent, fifty-nine point eight, fifty-nine point six. And then with the additional two million fund balance for the budget that we're in now, it brings it down to forty-seven point eight. Again, educated guesses, hopefully they'll.
We might be able to make up some of that deficit in the next few months.
Hopefully.
Only time will tell. Very strange year for budgets.
I can tell you, I looked up today, the state average as a percentage of expenses across North Carolina is forty-six point oh-four. I, I, it's just something that, that fund balance is something that we would need to use in case there was a hurricane. I won't say that word, but, you know, any, other opportunities that you may have that come up. Okay, so I think that's it for the pictures. Um, I don't have it on the, for the slide, but I would just wanted to go over this monthly report that y'all get real quickly. Now, if you return, if you return to your consent agenda, send your consent agenda so you can follow, follow it with her there. I'm not going to really get into the details. I just kind of wanted to generally go over it and explain what I'm aiming for at each of these boxes. And again, if you have any questions, just feel free to stop me. Okay, so let me just, this is, the, the report that you have is for, as for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, we're still collecting money that's applicable to that year. This report is done on a cash basis. So we're still reporting for fiscal, it's a typo, it's nineteen twenty, yes, I think your report says eighteen like this, fiscal year nineteen twenty. The first box, the green box, is actual cash on hand. So you've got several different general fund, capital reserve funds, and all the other funds. That's the actual cash that and/or investment balances and those particular funds. And I'd like to give you a comparison from last year, just so you can see where we were a year ago. The box in blue, which, you know, you might keep an eye on as we go forward, is with the current revenue streams, is because those revenues, specific revenues at a glance are basically our economic indicators locally, set, at long, because it's a large, large part of our budget. But the sales and use, occupancy, land transfer, those are all compared to budget. So we got your month actual compared to the budget and the year-to-date. See, then that's, that's portrayed in percentages. Again, it's compared to prior year. One thing I do want to note on this particular report is occupancy tax last year for July had not been received until August. I mean, until later in the, it's actually late. Yeah, it's late, because it was eighty-four, then it really should be, it really should be one oh, one oh five, one hundred and five percent for last year. This year, it's actually only ninety-seven point nine nine percent of budget. So all of those revenues in that box are compared to the budget, to the month and the year-to-date. The purple box, again, stop me if you need to, the purple box at the top, those are the total revenues compared to budget, actuals compared to budget, and then appropriate percentages. But the current year and the prior year as a comparison. Where are we last year? Last year, for revenues, we were at eighty-eight point five percent of the budget, and the prior year was, we were at eighty-four point thirty-three percent of the budget. Again, those encumbrances are included in that figure, so it does exceed revenues. Year-to-date, I kind of like to look at it year-to-date, every month, where are we, where are we, where are we? Okay? The pink box is basically our, our valuations, our tax levy and what our tax levy is. That's just for, that does not include personal property, utilities, and motor vehicles. That's just.
Real property.
Real property, exactly. And then the orange is monthly expenditures compared to year-to-date. Obviously, you know, the, the budget is, is the first column. There are no monthly expenses because we're pretty much wrapping it up. It's very immaterial that anything that has happened that we have spent in July for the fiscal year. I mean, it's, it's out there, it's just hard to track at this point. Revenues are easy to track, though expenditures are not so much. Again, that's, we have spent, in, in July, we spent eighty-five point five percent of the budget, which I.
No more stuff coming in.
And more stuff comes in, that's right. But, but for, for our reporting purposes, our software tracks monthly expenses, and then after June, it looks at all, it took one total. Yeah. So, so at, at the top, you see ninety-two point nine one, that includes encumbrances. Hopefully it won't be, it can't be any more than a hundred percent. Legally, legally, it cannot be more than a hundred percent.
That's not the budget.
Yes. That budget is a legal document, and that's what we follow. Okay, and so that, so we got your, your expenditures for general, water, wastewater. It's a lot of numbers, but if you're looking for something specific, hopefully it's there for you to see.
Yeah, when I look at it, the only thing I always have trouble remembering is which time it's compared to budget, which time it's compared to.
This is compared, most of these are compared.
Almost always, if it doesn't say, it means you're comparing to the budget.
Yeah, well, it does, yeah, exactly. Exactly.
In my own business, I'm always just comparing myself to last year because my budgets are kind of fuzzy.
Yeah. And like I said, your budget is, is the document that you're legally tied to, so this report does compare it to budget, but it is prepared on the cash basis. So, okay, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Thank you. In your career, this is the most unusual budget ever, huh?
It is, yeah. And things change all the time.
All the time. Breaking.
I, I should say we're fortunate that we're in this.
Yeah, we could be in a lot worse shape than a lot of folks are in a lot of places, and I think we're all very aware how fortunate we are that, that we have not been economically as crushed as a lot of areas have been.
Again, yeah, we're cautiously optimistic, but I really think that, I think that in October, November should give us a better picture, maybe towards the end of the year or where we're headed. Okay, thank you.
I, I think with that, Mayor, and perhaps what we should think about is going into the new year with a budget workshop, budget work session.
Yeah.
As opposed to trying to do anything major to the budget this early.
We're just, I think for our retreat this weekend, we're going to be high-level.
Just general.
Big picture, multi-year strategy slash vision. And in December or January, when we know what these fall numbers look like, we can really take a closer look at what we, what order we would put things back in that we took out, and whether there's any opportunities to be beyond that, we won't even talk about for fear of jinxing it.
Exactly. And that, and that guidance, that guidance would help the department heads and, and Finance Director and myself bring you a budget that is what you want to see.
In a way, it's almost liberating to have our, our retreat in such of a weird vacuum to say, we don't know if there'll be some money, but if there was some, what would we do with it?
What would we do?
So, in a way, it's a little bit freeing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. We really appreciate it. It's a, it's a crazy year to try to get your head around all the math of it all. All right, well, the next item on our agenda is committee reports. We have not been having too many committee meetings, so that's probably something we'll breeze right through as well. Next item is commissioners' agenda. Should we start on this end? We usually go that way. We'll try to go this way.
Two quick things. This kind of is a, kind of a committee report is that I spoke to Sue Kelly from the CAC over the weekend. We would like to have our September meeting. I was searching the town calendar, town calendar. I know we haven't scheduled anything, but now that the state has achieved two-point, stage two-point valve reopening, we'd like to go ahead. If it's too late to schedule for September, definitely October, and kind of get the CAC up and running again.
Did, did you and Sue have a date in mind?
Normally, we meet on the fourth Thursday of the month at eight-thirty in the morning. It's still kind of late. If it's too short notice for September, we can.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about your members. It may be a little short for them.
We just had this conversation over the weekend, so.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe October.
I was going to say, I would suggest October because it, it's not. I was gonna say, I would suggest October because it, it's not a problem for, for the town, I just don't know if your members, if that's enough notice for them.
Yeah, that's fine, we, we can wait a month, we, we'll ease back into things, I hit the ground running, and, you know, just being inactive so long, we really kind of got to look at what we can champion and work on anyway, so it'll take us a little bit of-
So, October the 22nd, that's the fourth Thursday.
That sounds good.
Yes, sir.
And just want to send one quick reminder that September 30th is the deadline to submit your census information. I'm not su-, I know we've had some emails come from the town with percentages, but super important, and everybody in this room is awfully gay, people are going to fill out their census, but time is running out, if anybody out there has not done it yet, really easy to do online, and please, please do that. A lot of funding that Dare County and Northeast North Carolina will get is dependent upon that, and it's very important, that's all I have.
Thank you for that, yeah. We do pretty well as a town, but that last little bit, it makes all the difference. All the difference. Anybody know somebody out there who hasn't done it yet? Doesn't take very long, we all know, we all, I'm sure, it's just a few minutes, so, yeah, can't stress that enough. And then tagging along, that of course is get your ballot, if you're thinking about voting, you should be voting. I read today that expect that 80% of North Carolinians will vote before Election Day this year, which will be the highest ever, so. There are certainly a lot of groups out there calling and making sure you know how to do it, so should be no excuse not to vote this year, even, even with crazy COVID.
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Nothing, sir. All right, well, I have several, so bear with me here.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. The CAC meeting, early voting will have started in October.
Oh, yes. Let me help you set.
Okay.
Maybe we can bump it up, it's the 15th is the first day, correct? That's what early voting will be.
October, they deliver the equipment on the 14th, and the early voting starts on the 15th through the 30th.
Do now, we'll talk, and we'll circle back to you, maybe we can do something that's second week of October, it's still a cushion of time. Because traditionally, the CAC takes off December, we don't meet a lot of calls, so we'll figure something out.
All right, thank you.
These items are held on the Mayor's Agenda, you have in your packet, so I always try to balance the short version versus the long version. Each of these has a lengthy description of why it's important when we talk about Constitution Week, which is September 17th through the 23rd, marking the 233rd anniversary of our Constitution. So we like to do those sorts of things to remind us why we're all doing this, and, and hold those ideals high, and as well as to just encourage kids to get to know more about their own Constitution, because we know they're going to take it. But anyway, so we're just asking citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers, and that's what that's all about. The next item is that September 2020, we like to call that Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I'm sure that if you're like me, you've seen in your feed dozens, dozens of articles about the stresses of COVID, and the stresses of the economic life of the country, and how challenging that can be for every, every, all of us and everyone. So if you want to join in the chorus of folks saying, reach out to your friends and your neighbors and your acquaintances to make sure they're, you know, that you offer yourself a talk, and sometimes it's the littlest thing that can make all the difference when, when you wouldn't know that I, my, normally share this sort of thing, but since we're talking about it, my nephew's son comes to us a few weeks ago, and it was obviously a shock, and it's a, it's a hard thing to, for a family to get through. So I wouldn't want to wish that on anyone, so you don't want to wish that you've done something later on, you want to take in that opportunity. So we'll make September Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Anything we can do is a problem that we, we always have to work on. Fire prevention is also important, another way to stay on this planet alive is to make sure that you're taking care of everything at home. I just replaced all my batteries for my smoke detectors early, usually do that at the, time changes, but apparently I didn't do it last year, because they started beeping on it. Well, one's going to be, they're all getting replaced, that's how, that's how you do that. Because bad enough just getting woke up and all that, but Fire Prevention Week, I think you can see that it mentioned things about being careful about, about your, your kitchen safety, is, is the big message from the National Fire Prevention Association, they're trying to get those word, the word out about that. So we've got some social media stuff lined up in the town, through Pride Department, thank you, sir. And obviously, we've had some tragedies in that area, so it couldn't be more important this year, as it is every year, to make sure people are thinking about how to be safe around the house. So, so I recommend that we approve these proclamations and motions, and that'll be my motion, I'll make that motion to adopt them.
I have number D.
Did I miss D? What did I get? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, that's the most important one, by the way. Oh, very important. You're right, I looked down, I thought I got four, but I had that four. Oh, very important, but this one's near and dear to my heart and a little less grave. But economically, we have been very challenged this year for labor, and a big part of that was the fact that at the federal level, some impediments were put in place a month or two ago that added on to the trouble that folks had with student work programs from overseas. So as you all know, maybe you don't know, there's, I think we had 1,700 students from colleges around the world that helped out our local businesses through the student, I forget what it's called, the Student Exchange Program. And this year, I think there were only less than 150, yeah, give or take, 170 maybe. So those kids were all working multiple jobs and worked really hard, and there've been a bunch of surveys out about how much our local businesses have lost in revenue by not having enough labor, and not being able to be open seven days a week, or having to reduce hours because they just couldn't find enough people from anywhere. And I know it's true in my company, I ended up driving a linen truck for half the summer because I couldn't get anybody of any strength to apply for a $20 an hour job, driving a truck that you could do right out of high school, but just weren't enough people around to get our amazing vacation economy staffed up properly. So this is really important to us locally, it's important to a whole bunch of companies regionally. I got a big email from Ben Kahoun there in Maggs Head, a big chunk, I want to say the lion's share of those students work in businesses in the town of Maggs Head, and I'm sure we are right behind, I don't think we have the exact numbers, but obviously the grocery stores are big, hotels are big, and they work at all sorts of places, right down to the little almond pop ice cream shops and all sorts of things. So we, we designed our resolution here, sort of after some of the others, but tailored it to our town, and I really appreciate the staff for getting this together so quickly because this is time sensitive, and we really want to have a coordinated push. There's a bunch of lobbying going on from all sorts of different sectors in Washington and locally, so thank you for putting that into that list of important proclamations and resolutions that I was jumping the gun on. Who we got? One more thing. Oh, that's right, this one over here, that didn't even make the list. Yeah, I have trouble with this, too many things. All right, number five, or E, I guess, if it was on the page. This is something that's came together over the weekend, and again, Ben Kahoun and I have talked about this a number of times, he sent an email over the weekend, and he cc'd, I think, a dozen and a half mayors up and down the coast, all of whom have, have made these sorts of resolutions in the past. But this one is, is really tailored towards the recent action at the federal level that mentioned our neighboring states but did not mention us, which was a real surprise to folks. So while protections were being offered to Georgia and Florida and, was it South Carolina, our glaring omission really raised some eyebrows. So this is a, is a timely one as well. We're trying to send a strong message. Maggs Head just passed a similar resolution, and they're the one who had the original draft, right, so they're passing that around. So-
That will be, again? That'll be E.
That'll be, this is E, that's right, here is E. And if you hadn't read it yet, it, you will be familiar with some of the language, because we've talked about it before, tourism at a billion dollars, this, this is what we want to do with our national resources here in North Carolina, and drilling is not among the, and not part of the plan. So whereas, 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 be it resolved that we are encouraging, let's see if I get to it here, encourage the President, Congress, federal agencies to include North Carolina prohibition of offshore drilling and seismic testing through June 30th, 2032. Encourage all citizens and visitors to North Carolina to contact the representatives in support of this moratorium. So we're trying to do this in the strongest way. What was that?
We should push the years back.
Yeah, that's like-
23, 23.
23, 23.
Yeah, the organization that actually started this and helped write it was, was actually looking for permanent moratoriums.
Permanent moratoriums.
It was, maybe a, a, a compromise.
Yes, it's good to reach for the stars, but eventually see what you can get with. But yeah, so I'm really glad that we were able to put that together on short notice, and I hope that the media that is still tuned in to this meeting will cover this item as much as anything else.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, before I get to item two, now I will say, I recommend the approval of these five proclamations and motions, and it's on that motion to be made by me, and I'm looking for a second.
In a late second.
Now we have a second, we have folks clamoring to be a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most she cares unanimously, thank you very much for that. The second part of my Mayor's Agenda has to do with recognizing some dedicated folks that have, some of whom have been with us for a very long time. You guys all know Eddie from Planning Board, he and I were on the Planning Board together for many years. He's concluded his service with the town, as we mentioned in the last meeting, I believe, had nearly nine years on the Planning Board, and prior to that, he had seven years on the Zoning Board of Adjustments, including one as chairman. He also participated in the Streets Improvement Study Committee, and we are all in endless appreciation for all that he did for the town and his longtime service for the community. The other person I'd like to call out is Jerry Jennings. Everybody who lives on the Outer Banks has heard his name 100 times. He served as the North Carolina Department of Transportation Division One Engineer for many, many years, after beginning as an engineering assistant in 1989. That's in my, my general vicinity, right? So Mr. Jennings worked in maintenance and project development and was promoted to Division One Engineer in 2003. If you don't know, Division One covers 14 counties, including ours, but we kind of see him as a partner because he has worked with our staff many changes to fill the hills over the years in Dare County and all of northeastern North Carolina, and we really considered him a partner with the town and work with staff for, to assist us in so many things, even recovering from storms, including Hurricanes Emily, Irene, Sandy, Matthew, and Dorian. So this is us, the board officially expressing our appreciation to Mr. Valadizio and Mr. Jennings for their contributions to the town, and I will be forging an expression of acknowledgement to both.
Hey, I have my damn one, quick thing.
Yes, please.
I can't help but see how ironic and nice it is that we are honoring Eddie Valadizio at the same time that we approved the landings plan.
That's right.
Our friend Eddie made Mr. Hollander's money. And he, he did that with everything. When he would sit you up here and talk, everybody got real quiet and leaned forward and really paid attention to what he had to say. He brought so much to the land, where I served with him in observing and being, meeting, hearing him, he really, that's a tough chair to fill, so he did a great job.
Trying to keep it positive that we appreciate all he did, but you're right, big shoes to fill, and we should be so lucky to have someone who could come close to filling that role of being the thoughtful, well-researched voice that he always was to every discussion he, he brought his, himself into, yeah. And he cared deeply about the town, he just, without any doubt, right? So hopefully he watches the YouTube coverage of this meeting and knows how much he cares because he was not able to be here tonight so that I could make a blush in public. Last couple items are really minor, just wanted to reiterate the same things we said about before, about voting and the census. I sent you all messages earlier in the week about calling your reps about the drilling above and beyond this, this resolution. Any phone calls and emails that you can personally make, all add up to the chorus that we're trying to get across so that that chip can be righted sooner rather than later. So I appreciate you doing that for me and for us, and for the town, and for the community. And with that, I have to get back to my list because I forget what's after Mayor's Agenda, it's of course the Town Manager's Agenda.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
All right, how about you, Mr.?
Not for me, Mayor.
All right, of course, we mentioned earlier the Consent Agenda, are there any highlights you want to point out?
Yes, sir. Consent Agenda includes the minutes from the August 10th, 2020 meeting, Budget Amendment Number Three, which is the encumbrances for fiscal year 2020, as Beverly mentioned earlier. Scheduled public hearing, zoning amendment request, Chapter 153 zoning, setbacks for mixed-use development dwelling and businesses, request to modify setback from this mixed-use development to commercial standards rather than residential standards, recommending the board set this for public hearing for the Monday, October 12th meeting at 6:00 P.M. And you have received some letters from some citizens speaking to that, that are, have either been copied to you or in your packet. And lastly, the July 2020 monthly report, staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
So we have a motion. I'll second that. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Consent Agenda approves yours, thank you for that. After the consent agenda is public comment, which we've had so much of tonight, I know you guys are itching to talk now, please step forward. Okay, I just, but thank you for being here, we really appreciate you all coming out and listening, even if you're not, for getting on the mic. Thank you for caring about the town and being here. Going to need to respond to public comments. Perjurement is just the only thing on the earth, Jake. Everything else would be so bad. All right, unless anybody had anything else, we're looking for a motion.
Oh, yeah, one more. Try that little more if you're sitting still. He, he had to talk me into bringing him tonight, it's like, it's a long meeting, it can be a little boring.
Wanted to go.
You know, but he, he represented himself very well, thank you.
Trust.
It'll be a quiz after.
One of mine came to one meeting one time and it never let me live it down. Sorry, you got to be here. So is that it?
Message to her, sir?
Yes? Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, I will go back.